I know you have the online version. I'm not getting the phone number. But this is 24.
Good evening, Mayor Stram. Great to see you.
How are you, Clark?
I'm all good.
Beautiful as well, so.
Perfect.
Just a visual for you to be able to see that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
And I tried the legislation.
Yep, yep.
It's always kind of.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe.
Thank you. Good to see you. You're so welcome. Good to have you. Did the job. Yeah, we wanted. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
How do you do? Anything productive in there?
I mean, I would.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Caitlin, you have a little round. Thank you, my barber. If you could stick, you can hop up and bring it over. I'll give you a nice ball.
Perfect. And if you want to play different. Right there, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, but we're going to invite you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, you're always welcome.
My pleasure. Glad to do it again.
Hi.
We weren't in the original package, then they got emailed out. Out next thing.
That's what happened.
I'm sure about that.
I think that's talented. I would say hi. I would say you're very talented.
No, the script for the public hearing.
Or you know how to get people's attention.
Sometimes.
Yeah. Why not suppose to be sitting in a public?
No, you should.
We're all shy, so.
Oh, I don't know. I guess. Okay. She's okay.
Oh, really? Wonderful. That's been great, Grandpa.
Yeah. Yes, I appreciate that. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
You want to science me here?
If you want to talk.
Yeah.
Hi. How good is this? Thank you. Original, too.
Thank you, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we're just waiting for the script. Script, for the public hearing script. Tell your name. Charlie Conrad. Charlie. 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 My memory must be the best for you. Later on.
Good evening and welcome to the Creswell City Council meeting, April 8, 2024. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we can judge us all. We have one councilor absent tonight, Councilor Hope. We have one councilor absent tonight, Councilor Hope has an excused absence. If you will please note that, Caitlin. We begin with the public forum, and each speaker is allowed in three minutes. So I will announce your name if you would come to the podium here and then announce your name as well, and then speak to us on your topic. First speaker tonight is Carl Walker. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor. It's like a pulpit. You know what I'm talking about. I have a matter of concern of the Creswell Golf Course management there. Is Wendy Bear here, by the way? Wendy Bear? Your new utilities recorder. Anyway, there was a fine fish he was showing in the community connection. If ever that is better than salmon. I've done air conditioning maintenance here. Working with Mr. Piper was a great thing. He's a wonderful man, in my estimation. Have no problem with dealing with someone who is very coherent and kind. Didn't find that at the golf course, however, I live at the Villas. My dog, Black Boxer, he was raised there. Three years he was out there running around and allowed to. A golfer would come up and ask, run with us. Sure, sure. It was just fine. The dogs were allowed. Then a policy became, and now dogs are not allowed. Well, the management does have a dog that runs free. And that's their prerogative. So my dog was out last, well, it's been eight days ago. And I heard some yelling in the distance. He had gone to see the dog that was in the golf court. And like he would expect to. And so I went to get him. I was on the golf course. No golfers around, and a man comes up in a golf course that I did recognize. And he was very heated, rude, and obscene, the way he would throw profanities at you. Even the form that we fill out here recommends abstaining from profanity. I don't appreciate it at all. So I retaliate. I didn't retaliate. I did quite abruptly say to him that I didn't appreciate his foul mouth. I'm a 26-year Air Force and Air National Guard Sergeant. I can deal with profanity. That's commonplace. This guy will cut you to the ground and say expletives that are completely out of line. This is the same man who appeared at our back door, the slider doors, with a camera going right a foot away on the porch, unannounced, just filming, videoing the dog. And of course, I told him, I know what you're doing. I didn't call the police, the sheriff. Figure it didn't have to be a law matter. This man came up and he, when I was on the golf course, was just saying all manner of corrupt things. And I told him I didn't appreciate it. And then he pushed me. Okay? And then I continued to tell him about his obscene, profane tongue. And he sucker punched me in the face. He called the sheriff. And I also called the sheriff. And the sheriff did not come out to make out a report. Didn't interest him. He said he's not a lawyer. He had that right. And that when he, if he were to come out, he would just change, I would change the story. So I called for a supervisor, Sergeant Ray, and was told by dispatch that he would contact me. That didn't happen. I called the next day to dispatch and wanted a call from the supervisor. That didn't happen. And an email to these.
So Carl, that's been over three minutes.
Oh, sorry.
If you can wrap it up, we normally get the allow of three minutes. If you can wrap it up, that'd be great.
Okay. On Yelp, you can see the same type of reviews that I have mentioned that tell of this man's behavior out there. The former H O A president called him a hothead. You can call yourself and find out what management is like there. And should this go on, that people are belittled and criticized in the friendly city? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Our next speaker is Christina Allen. Christina? Okay. Christina Allen. Christina, you're up to speak. You're up to speak, Christina.
Hi, how are you? So I just wanted to talk about, well, at first I thought it was going to be an issue. But the officer finally talked to us. He even bought Richard some clothes. So I thought that was really cool. But I was having an issue because somebody punched me in the face. And then they stole my husband's clothes and his tools, his bicycle, home car, everything. Richard has no clothes now, all because Richard went against his friend, that is, his boss, Jim Ivy. And Jimmy's car is going directly to the restaurant in Greenville. So now Richard has nothing. Punched me in the mouth. Not too happy about that. Well, thanks to Alex here. He was nice enough to buy my husband some clothes. And I just wanted to say thank you very much. That means a lot to us. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Oh, no. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the mayor's report. And I'm going to begin tonight with an Arbor Day proclamation.
Sit now.
That's for later on.
Oh, okay.
Later on. We have one other speaker, but she will be speaking later on during an agenda item. So this is the Office of the Mayor, City of Creswell, Oregon Proclamation Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic fatality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the City of Creswell has maintained its status as a Tree City USA for 13 years in recognition of its dedication to the preservation and value of its urban forest, now therefore, I, Dave Stram, Mayor of the City of Creswell, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2024, as Arbor Day in the City of Creswell. And I urge all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Date this day of April 8, 2024. So proclaim Arbor Day for this April. Next on the agenda, we have the appointment to the Budget Committee. So our Budget Committee serves a vital role in the community. Every year in May, the Budget Committee convenes. The Budget Committee is comprised of seven citizens and seven members of the council. So 14 people fill this dice, and let me tell you, we really do fill it when we meet. Imagine 14 of us up here. We meet twice with the Budget Officer, Mr. Piper, and City Manager, Amber. We review the budget that is being proposed. We ask a lot of questions. We have opportunities to go out and personally take tours of city-owned facilities. We convene a second time to fine-tune that budget. And then the Budget Committee adopts the budget and then is presented to the council for final adoption. So we had three vacancies on the council. And a couple of months ago, we had no candidates. So I am thrilled that now we have four candidates. Unfortunately, that means that one person won't get elected, won't get appointed. But I would like to announce the four candidates tonight. And then by our charter, the mayor appoints the candidates to the Budget Committee with consent of the council. So I will also announce the terms for each one. And some of these individuals I haven't met personally. So I'm going to ask if they would stand and just remain standing for a moment. First, we have Derek Isaacson. Derek, thank you for your application. And we have Joshua Johnson. Joshua, thank you. Then we have Laurel Henry. Laurel, thank you. And then we have Lori Barker. Lori, thank you. So councillors, you've also received the applications, I believe, in your packets. And my appointment was going to begin with Derek Isaacson, appointed to, a term will expire in 2026. So that's a three-year term. It was vacated by Dave Nicholson last year. So Derek Isaacson to a term until 2026. Second appointment would be Joshua Johnson. We have two terms that are one-year terms. This term expires the end of this year. And then just a word on how our committee appointments, because at the city, we always have vacancies. Just to let you know. If you've been around very long, you know, we always have vacancies. And the way the process works is at the end of the year in September, then our city clerk, Caitlin, sends out a letter to everyone whose term is expiring. He says, if you would like to continue for another term, please let us know by, I believe it's the end of September. You simply have to email or call Caitlin and say, sure, which of course is what we'd like to hear. And then you will be reappointed January of 2025 to a new term. For those who say, no, I can't, or I'm moving, as happens, then those terms are opened up at the end of the year. So Joshua Johnson, a term that would expire 2024. And then our third appointment would be Lori Barker to a term that would also expire 2024. So Laurel, I want to thank you for your application and encourage you to continue to look for opportunities.
I know, thank you.
We have lots of them.
I know, thank you.
You're very welcome. So for those of you who are appointed, Jim Piper, Jim, raise your hand. Jim is the one you're going to want to connect with. The date for the training is April 30th, correct? At 6:00 PM. And that's here at City Hall. So I would encourage you before then to reach out to Jim. You can do that by calling City Hall during the daytime, going online, and you can find Jim's email address. Or Jim might reach out to you, because you'll have their information as well. The training is the 30th of April, 6 o'clock. The two Budget Committee meetings are May 7th and May 21st at 6:00 PM.
Correct.
Here in the council chambers. So thank you again, each one, for applying and welcome to a very important way of serving our community. Thank you all very much. Then we have tonight, a very special guest, our local state representative, Charlie Conrad, who's come here tonight to give us a legislative report. Charlie, the podium is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. Members of the council, I appreciate you making space for me on the agenda to come do another legislative summary about the short session. So similar as to what I did after the long session last year. I'd like to touch base on a few things that we did in the short session, which was the 35-day session in February. So I have a number of things to go through, but please, at any point in time, please feel free to stop, ask questions. There are a lot of complex issues that I'll just touch on at a high level. So if any of these are of interest and you want me to get further in depth, happy to go and answer any questions you have and provide you the information that's important to you. So don't hesitate. And one of the things I want to do, start off with, for folks in the room that might be paying attention and for the councillors, just a reminder of what House District 12, the boundaries of House District 12 are. And we start at the Lane Douglas Line, so obviously Cottage Grove-Creswell, up just north into Lynn County, which includes Junction City, but not Harrisburg, and then up to the peaks of the Cascade. So in the city itself, in the district itself, there are eight different cities. I think I have 11 different school districts that I represent and numerous different fire departments and fire agencies as well. So very broad and diverse district with a lot of local government and special district interests. The committees that I serve on are, I serve on four in this legislature. Serve on the Judiciary Committee, so all things public safety, all things related to criminal and civil law, behavioral health and healthcare. The next one is emergency management, vets, and general government. And so again, particularly with emergency management, it's very important for this district, as we all remember from January. And then the fourth one that I serve on, it's the Public Safety Subcommittee for Ways and Means. So that looks at the financial side of all, everything public safety, everything emergency management related. And in addition to those committees that I serve on, there are a number of other groups that I've involved in a number of other appointments that I've received since I spoke to this group last. I'm involved with Pacific Northwest Economic Regions, PENWER. And that's an economic group that is actually international. It's the Northwest US and Western Canada. And we talk a lot about the economic region, emergency management, a lot of different things in that group. And involved with Adjustment Reinvestment Grant Committee, and that's through the Criminal Justice Commission, the CJC. And what we look at are the grants that go to local parole and probation within all the counties to try to reduce recidivism and the number of days that people actually spend in prison to try and improve the system. And also on the Juvenile Justice Policy Commission, which came out of the long session. And hopefully, we'll have our first meeting here in May or June. Also on the Juvenile Interstate Compact, looking at juveniles that are housed and the way that the states in the Northwest Region work together on that. Also on a task force for modernizing grants and contracts for nonprofits. Came out Senate Bill 606 from the long session. And I was fortunate enough this time to be asked to be part of the Budget 110 Work Group. So if you remember, everything with Measure 110, we had, and I'll talk about it a little bit, but House Bill 4002, which is the re-criminalization side of Measure 110, we had a work group on the other side that was looking at the finances on that. And that's where we identified all the shovel-ready projects for behavioral health. So I was fortunate enough to be on that to look at those projects. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on as well. The other two groups that I'm involved with are caucuses within the House. I participate in the Water Caucus, and we look at all things water-related, particularly with city infrastructure and city water projects. So able to advocate for cities and the community that way. Then also I'm part of the Veterans Caucus as well. And one of the things that we were able to do with the Veterans Caucus is we got the state to finally put money forward to the housing, the veterans' housing down in Roseburg. We got, it's a federal match. And we put, the state's going to put 35 million to that, and hopefully the federal government will put their match, and we can actually get the veterans home going in Roseburg. So that's been going on for 15 years, and finally, the state is stepping forward to do that. So those are the groups that we have, that I'm on, and we have very specific issues that we advocate for. We've been successful with that. This short session, so kind of talking about a little long session. Remember the long session? We had unlimited bills that we could put in. You just put in as many as you want. We had several legislators that put in well over 100 bills. For the short session, just because it is 35 days, we were limited to two bills. And that's both on the House side and the Senate side. And just for some data numbers, we had 180 measures. So I say measures, not just simply legislative bills, because we have joint resolutions and House resolutions, memorial resolutions, other things. We had 180 measures that were submitted, and 71 of them passed both chambers. And just for comparison, in the long session, we had 1,758 that were submitted and 360 passed both houses, starting on the House side. And then starting on the Senate side, they had 111 measures that were submitted and 62 passed both houses. And that compares to the long session where there were 1,202 measures submitted and 293 passed both houses. So you can see the workload was substantially less, but we had a much more compressed period of time to do all that work. A few high-level comments. And my takeaway, again, being a front And my takeaway, again, being a freshman representative, I don't have a comparison other than to the long session, but this really was a very bipartisan session. And these are my thoughts, and I haven't found anybody that disagrees, whether it's other legislators who have been around for a lot longer, lobbyists, other folks that are involved and active and follow legislation. It really was a very bipartisan session. We certainly had some party-line bills, but for the most part, we came together and we passed some key legislation, and I'll touch on some of that in a little bit. One of the last things that we did that I think is important to note is, one of our last acts, is Speaker Rayfield stepped down because he's again running for Attorney General. And so, we voted in now Speaker Julie Fahey, who represents the Vanita area. And the fact that in our regional delegation, we have the Speaker of the House is key. One of the things that the Speaker does, they're one of the three folks in the state that have veto authority. Nothing passes the House without their tacit approval. No appointments, so some of the appointments that I mentioned for myself, those go through the Speaker's office. The committees that you're on or not on all go through the Speaker. Same thing on the Senate side with the Senate President. And then, of course, the governor's the other person with veto authority. So, those are the three most powerful elected positions in the state. So, the fact that one of them is in Lane County, understands Lane County, understands smaller communities, that's fabulous. And I personally, I get along very well with now Speaker Fahey, and I look forward to working with her. One of the things that I appreciate from her and that she has already shown, so Speaker Rayfield was very much bipartisan. He worked with, being a Republican, he worked with the House Caucus very well. Speaker Fahey has now going to do the same thing. She's already made her intentions known. And one of the ways that she did that, when she talked to our minority leader, she talked about letting the minority leader have a say on which Republicans go onto which committees. That's huge. That has never happened before. So, the fact that we now have a Speaker that is going to talk to our minority leader about the committee assignments for the Republican members is huge. So, again, I am very optimistic about the upcoming sessions that we're going to have, very optimistic about the way that the Oregon State Legislature is going to continue to work and work for Oregonians in a very bipartisan way to get good things passed. So, always optimistic in that regard. Some of the other things that we did, we passed, we passed a number of budget bills. And, you know, there were some key themes that we had with all the budget bills that were passed. But some of the things that we did, we picked up where things got left off or left out of the bills in the long session. So, specifically, we got funding for summer schools. There is a process with that, so not all school districts are going to get funded. There's a waitlist, and I've heard some, from some of the school districts that are on that waitlist that aren't necessarily going to get funded. And we're trying to work through that process to figure out, okay, how can we get them funded? But the fact that we actually got money for summer school programs is huge. We got money for relief nurseries. We, that was left out in the long session. We got funding for child advocacy centers. And we also put funding towards Internet Crimes Against Children. So, we really were able to focus on a lot of public policy, a lot of victims, and a lot of juvenile and kid-related issues. So, very happy with, again, what we did. The two bills that I submitted, I was fortunate, the first one, it, I'll try to minimize my House bills, but at least for the record and for you guys to know, in case anybody wants to look them up. House Bill 43, this is my animal abuse bill that I submitted in the long session, and it failed in Ways and Means. So, for this session, I took everything out that would cause it to go to Ways and Means, took out all the funding. So, I had funding in there for FFA and some other programs, and I'll find different ways to help fund FFA and 4H. But it passed. I was fortunate to get it passed, and what it does, it tightens up our animal abuse regulations. Unfortunately, in Lane County, we have a number of horses that get starved. We have another number of animals that get starved, and they're in the media quite a bit. So, the fact that we're now tightening up our animal abuse regulations is huge. So, this was signed by the governor on March 27th, and it becomes effective at the end of June. So, I was very excited about that. The second bill, and this is one of those complex topics, let me know how in-depth you want me to get. My second bill is House Bill 4056. This was just signed by the governor on the 4th of April. And this, I ran this bill at the request of Association of Oregon Counties. And this is the bill that is intended to fix the Tyler versus Hennepin case, the Tyler versus Hennepin U.S. Supreme Court case, is the one that states that counties on tax-for-closed properties, once they dispose of the property, if there are any proceeds, counties can't keep that. That's a violation of the takings clause. They actually have to try to get it back to whoever the rightful person is, whether it's the homeowner, whether it's an heir, whoever that might be. So, this was a bill to try and fix that. And once you get into property tax foreclosure law, it's a longstanding process. Oregon was not the only state that has to change things. The original U.S. Supreme Court case came out of Minnesota. But there are a lot of things that, statutes that you have to get into. Once you start talking about lien holders, once you start talking about property dispositions, there are a lot of elements that get into that. And so, I tried to negotiate, tried to balance what we could do with both sides of getting this done. Ultimately, what ended up happening is this bill went before the Revenue Committee, which is chaired by Rep. Nathanson, who has part of Eugene as well. She gave me an opportunity a number of times to work with this, to negotiate with this. And with her help, we were finally able to get something negotiated. And like I said, it was signed by the governor on the 4th. And essentially, what's going to happen is Department of Revenue is going to bring all the stakeholders together, and we're going to take this time in the interim to prepare something to come back in the long session to figure this out. Cities are impacted by this because when property, properties are foreclosed on, one of the first things that happen is the county is eligible to take all of the monies that they're due, all their taxes that they're due, any fees, any fines, anything that they put into rehabbing the property to get it to sell or to clean it up. And so, out of those monies, money that returns to cities. So, if the cities have fees and fines, if the cities are also due property taxes, that, those are the monies that come out of it. So, cities are actually impacted by this. So, I'm hopeful that we can continue to keep and make sure that cities receive all the funds that they want, but also that we protect property owners and that property owners are now actually get the money back that they're due, so they get the equity essentially back in the properties that were foreclosed on. Any questions, anything further of property tax foreclosure law? Okay. Leave that be then. Some of the other things that we were able to do, I mentioned funding. Funding is always a big thing that we do at the state legislature, and so, talking about some of the district capital projects. And just to touch on how this process actually works, remember, all of these capital funding requests are all competitive. So, there are 60 of us in the House, there are 30 senators. We all want money to come back to our districts. We all have projects, we all have needs. And so, it is a competitive process. So, as members here, city staff know, we reach out a lot to get projects to a state where we can advocate for them so they're shovel-ready and so that we can get them to move forward as best we can. In a recent town hall, I did with some of the other members of the regional delegation, Speaker Fahey said that she did the calculations and that there were 10 times the amount of money in requests then was actually available. So, there are a lot of projects throughout the state that did not get funded, a lot of asks that did not get funded. And one of the nice things that we have, that I have the ability with our regional delegation, is that we get together and we advocate for projects. We look through the project lists, we figure out, okay, which ones are we supporting? And how can I help the other delegates, the other representatives and senators support their projects in their specific districts as well? So that overall, we have more of a regional approach to how we get things done and how we get things funded, because we all get impacted by the quality of the projects and the money that we're able to bring into the region. So, we work well together on that, and we try to support each other, and we try not to compete against each other as well. And that's a big thing. There are some projects that we don't agree on, but for the most part, we're all there for each other and we all agree on them. This time around, we had, if you remember back, we had a series of buckets of money and projects and themes that we were trying to fund. One of them was shovel-ready behavioral health facilities, as I mentioned before, that were, was going in parallel with House Bill 4002, to get those going. We had a number of projects throughout the state that we got funded. And one of the things that I was able to do on that committee is help to make sure that rural Oregonians and some of the smaller communities, some of the smaller counties, received funding and had some of their projects funded. So, you know, specifically like Walla Walla County. They were requesting about $300,000 for a couple of projects. Yeah, $300,000 for a lot of communities, a lot of cities is not much, but Walla Walla County, $300,000 is huge. So, the fact that we could take care of some of our smaller counties that had significant issues with resources was very valuable. So, I'm glad that the money that we were able to get out went throughout the entire state. It wasn't just focused in one region. The other things, clearly, housing and housing-related projects was one of them. And then the other one, city and community infrastructure projects. So, again, on the Water Caucus, we talk a lot about city and community needs and, you know, the condition of a lot of, a lot of the infrastructure carrying water and wastewater to and from cities. In this district, some of the projects that we, that we made, we got to the governor's desk, a few have been signed and are good to go. One of them, $900,000 to upgrade the Bear Mountain Radio Tower and to buy 100 radios for emergency management. So, happy to be able to get that. We, I was able to get $1 million for Junction City. They have an Alderweil project, able to get $1 million for there. $3 million went to Cottage Grove for their water infrastructure and housing project. The bill that this, these were attached to had a $3 million limit. That's, that's where they put the cap at. So, Crestwell, or Cottage Grove's original request was four and a half, but they're getting three and a half. And then, also, as part of the behavioral health funding side of things, we got $4 million to Wellamet Family Treatment to build a medical detox and residential facility. So, with the lack of investment over the last couple of decades that Oregon's put into behavioral health and mental health, this is one step. This is going to be a conversation that we're going to have to have every session to fund these shovel-ready projects, to be able to fund the programs. You know, the workforce is a significant issue, and we're always going to have to be working to try and make sure that we've got the workforce that can staff these. The one project that is still on the governor's desk, and that some of you may have heard about, it's the $1 million for Crestwell for the water treatment plan. And this morning, I received a call that the governor is looking at a series of projects. And the Oregonian is also, I've written up, there are seven projects that she's looking at to make sure that there is actually going to be increased ability to produce houses as a result of these projects. And this is the project, I was surprised, because to me, it's an easy connection of the dots for this, of being able to do the work. And then the houses that can come on the back end, the connections that can be made. So, this project is still alive. I am still hopeful for it. I've reached out to folks, reached out to Regional Solutions, who works out of the governor's office. She is supportive of this project. I think everybody is supportive. It's just ensuring that the governor is comfortable that there's going to be enough of a connection between it. And for me, it's a no-brainer, but it is still one of those things that was a surprise to me to hear today. So, Mayor Stram, if you'd like to say anything, it's your meeting. I'd let you jump in at this point in time if you want to add anything on that topic.
We're hopeful.
All right.
Tomorrow, you're going to be on a call at 2:00 p.m., Manager Amber.
Yeah, I've been kind of busy this morning, putting together a letter that went up to the state, also dealing with Senator Hayden's office, as well as Representative Conrad, and just generally talking to people. And there is support. Haven't heard anyone say there isn't. But tomorrow, staff has a phone call into Matt at Housing, the state housing, and we will discuss this and try to explain the nexus between the money and the housing here in Crestwell.
Okay. We're working on it.
Yes, yeah. And as I talked to Manager Amber earlier today, I'm fully in support of this, and I'll keep advocating it as best I can and make sure that that connection's made. So, again, I'm always hopeful. I think it's a strong case, not worried about it, but we just have to make that case and move forward. So, it's already passed out of the legislature, which is a good sign. One more person to convince, and then we're good. So. Just to highlight a few of the things that came, capital projects that did not get funded, the district has a lot of requests all the time. And usually, for me, coming to my office, we've got easily a dozen-plus requests for capital funding. And those projects, you know, we try to put them into the right buckets, we try to make the strongest cases that we can. So, for instance, you know, in the long session, when I was able to get money for Lowell Water District, I was able to make the case with housing, with the environmental impact of, you know, if their electronic system fails, what does that mean for Dexter Lake? What does that mean for wastewater and sewage? I was able to make the case for emergency management side, because so many fire camps are always set up there, the need to make sure that firefighters have water, the city has water. So, I try to bring as many elements as I can to make the case and advocate for these projects. But again, you know, with the, all the projects coming in and the amount of money, some get cut. So, some of the projects, and this is actually one that surprised me, I thought of all the projects I put forward, that this is, was going to, was going to happen, but the city of Westford asked for $600,000 to do their city hall and to build a fire station. That, that didn't make it, and I'm not sure, sure why that one didn't make it. Junction City had another project for a different well, $2.7 million. Again, Junction City has a lot of well issues going on all the time. So, the fact we got one of the two funded, I'm very grateful for that. Coburg, they wanted money to do a water tank rehab. That didn't get funded, so I'll continue to work with them on their water issues. Blue River, still, there's a $4 million ask, $4.5 million ask for their wastewater system. Again, with the recovery and some of the issues that they're having, ongoing issues that they're having with the recovery side, because they're right next to the Mackenzie River, and it has higher protections. And so, some things that would be easier in other regions, it's not easy up there. But that didn't get funded, unfortunately. I think that was very close, from what I was told, but there are just some things missing, and there's a window of opportunity that passed. So, fingers crossed, we'll get something there. One of the other projects, again, up in Blue River, it's called The River, and it's an entertainment facility, entertainment venue, that some folks up there are trying to get going to help with economic development and community gatherings, you know, emergency gathering points, all those kind of things. That didn't get funded, so I'll continue to work with them on how to get funding there. And then, once again, RABR Fire Response asked for some money for their fire station. I was able to get them some money last year for some, some of their equipment needs. They didn't get funded this time. You know, and I think some of the calculus that goes into the funding decisions, you know, I advocate, other folks make those decisions. But if you got money one year, you're less likely to get it next, because really, there's an idea that we're going to spread the money out and help as many communities as we can with, with those specific needs. So, any questions on the capital funding project process, anything else I can provide? Okay. So, the, the key bills that we passed, the first one, which I mentioned already a couple times, is House Bill 4002. So, this is the re-criminalization of user amounts of narcotics. And this is, it was an interesting process of how this came to be. And again, this passed bipartisan, but there was bipartisan yes, and then there were, there were certainly some no's for this as well, because there are, there are a number of folks throughout the state that don't want drugs to be criminalized at all. And it was very, I wouldn't say contentious, but there were a lot of conversations, a lot of intense conversations as this bill developed. And a couple of the things that are important to keep in mind in this environment as, you know, what turned out to be 4002, you know, polling at the time, and one of the reasons why this came to be is polling at the time was roughly 60, 70% of Oregonians wanted re-criminalization and/or changes to Measure 110. There were two Citizens Nift initiatives that were looming overhead. So, all of this forced the legislature to do something, because if the legislature didn't do anything, then those Citizens Initiative petitions would have gone forward. And a lot of folks didn't like what was in those petitions. So, initiatives. So, the conversations began with C. misdemeanor. C. misdemeanor is a very low-level misdemeanor, basically doesn't do much of anything as a police officer. You don't do a whole lot with C. misdemeanors, and you never, people aren't in jail. So, one of the terms of art that was used in these discussions is governmental interest. As a police officer, why would I go put or investigate a C. misdemeanor for somebody that might be having a mental health crisis or risk a situation that now is going to turn into a resisting arrest or assaulting a police officer, something that's far more worse than what the original crime is? And my caucus, we held firm on, we wanted an A. misdemeanor. We wanted that governmental interest. We wanted police officers, I want police officers, to be able to handle the situations that are in front of them, to be able to handle and manage those problems as they present themselves. And what eventually happened is the folks that were advocating for the C. misdemeanor, they moved, and we ended up with what's called an unclassified misdemeanor. We've had unclassified misdemeanors for a long time. City of Crestwell probably has some unclassified misdemeanors in your, in your code. I know Springfield did when I was a police officer there. But this is a very special one. It's similar to what an A. misdemeanor would have been. There's maximum penalties up to 180 days in jail, but there's a process to get to that point. The first thing is what's called a voluntary deflection program. And the counties are now charged with developing, and Lane County is one of them, what that deflection program looks like. And what that is intended to do is that if somebody were to be arrested or cited for[1789.82] And what that is intended to do is that if somebody were to be arrested or cited for user amounts of narcotics, the first step is this deflection program. It's a chance for somebody to voluntarily go and seek treatment. If they choose not to, or if they fail that treatment, then the next thing is called a conditional discharge. And this comes from the district attorney's office. And the conditional discharge is a way that the district attorney can kind of say, no, now you're going to go. And again, if the person fails, then the next step would be going before a judge, being convicted, facing up to 180 days. And with that, if they fail that 180 days or probation, whatever comes out of that, then they can be sanctioned, units up to 90 days, that they can be sent back to prison and actually sit in the cell. So it is a process that we have never had before. Marion County has something very similar, and that's what kind of the template was. The state of Washington has something similar, and that was used in forming this, but this is brand-new for the state. And what that means is, all these programs, all the policies, processes, procedures have to be formed, hired, all the workforce needs to be hired. The police departments now need to know and figure out, okay, what are their internal policies? What are they going to do? What does this look like? How are they going to follow up on some of these things? As we continue to work through the public defenders crisis and make sure that we've got enough public defenders, some of the arguments against recriminalization is that we don't have enough public defenders. We don't, but we have more public defenders than we do district attorneys. We need more district attorneys, we need more public defenders, and we don't have enough judges as well. So our whole criminal justice system is going to need a boost of money and workforce to be able to make this work. So I am, as I've said before, I'm always optimistic, and I approach this with, okay, this is what it is. We're going to do everything we can to make it work, and that way, if it doesn't work, we know why it didn't work, and we don't want it to not work because we didn't try. So as long as we are trying to do it, and doing everything that we can, and learn the lessons as we go along the way, then hopefully, it'll achieve those goals, which is to get people into treatment, give them that incentive to get into treatment, and then into, hopefully, long-term recovery, because it's successful. That's what we want. Certainly, recriminalization, in my opinion, isn't going to work for everybody. It hasn't worked for everybody, but it works for a population. And for us to really do something in this realm, we have to open as many doors into treatment as we can. Simultaneously, we have to build that backend infrastructure, so that we've got physical buildings and places for people to go, but we also need to get that workforce to operate those. We have a number of facilities on the juvenile side where they have beds, but they don't have staffing for those beds. It doesn't do us any good to have a bed that can't be staffed. So this is a very complex issue. It's going to be a conversation that we have to have, and we have to keep investing over time in every legislative session, talk about during the interim, and work with cities and local communities about what are your needs? What facilities would meet your constituents' needs? How do we help you get these facilities in there? How do we help these folks? Because on the back end, we really don't want somebody that might just be battling addiction, I don't want somebody battling addiction, to have an anvil over their neck and ruin the job opportunities or housing opportunities. Let's get people to a good spot so they can be productive folks again. Let's get good people, you know, our friends, our families, our kids. Let's get them to be a good spot, and that's what we want. And that's hopefully what this will do, and that's why, again, I'm optimistic. So that's 4002. Any questions on 4002? That was one of the big things we did. Okay. I'll touch on a couple of the other ones just briefly. Senate Bill 1537 is the housing bill. There are a number of things in the housing package. It's got, it's an omnibus, the thing that I talk about, because again, I tried to be optimistic, but this is the one hiccup that, for me, is the Housing Accountability and Production Office. It's a new agency. I usually don't like new agencies, but some of what this agency is supposed to do is to help with granting, and help with funding, and help with housing production. So as HAPO, H-A-P-O, works with the city on housing and housing production, is supposed to help eliminate administrative barriers. Hopefully, that will happen. It's got a little bit of regulatory side to it, which is what I have issues with. I want it to work, but I don't want it to become another lube. I don't want it to be a lube light, where now it becomes more of an administrative burden, and administrative burden on cities and local communities, because if somebody appeals, now the staff has to do all the backend work, city has to eat the cost to get all the documents and get everything up there. So that's what I'm really watching, is how efficient is HAPO going to be in actually doing its job of eliminating barriers, so that we can actually do some things to improve housing production throughout the state. One of the other things that we passed, it's part of an omnibus, but it's Senate Bill 1576. And I don't know if I heard from Crestwell staff on this one or not, but this is for the rec immunity. So if you're not familiar with recreation immunity, this is what enables park providers to, under certain circumstances, if you don't charge, or if you charge a minimum amount, that you can't be sued if somebody twists their ankle. In my opinion, a bad case law out of Newport for somebody that slipped and fell on a walking bridge that was icy. And this opened up all of recreational immunity. Recreational immunity's been a thing in Oregon forever, and this impacts our large private timber owners, because they let hunters out there. This impacts all of our special districts, our park districts. This impacts all the trails, all the parks within city limits, that now, if somebody went and twisted their ankle in your park, you can be sued for it. You've lost cities and counties, and everybody's lost recreational immunity. This bill didn't go far enough, in my opinion. It went, because it's a temporary, it is a one-year Band-Aid, and we're going to be talking about the long session. So I'm interested to be, and anxious to be, part of this conversation as well. Again, coming from Lane County Parks, recreational immunity was huge. We always talked about it and focused on that, and that was part of our decision-making processes as we did certain things. So this will be an intense area of conversation, because it was right now. One of the groups that is advocating to get rid of it, or to change it, are the Oregon Trial Lawyers Association, so folks that want to sue. So my apologies to any members of the Oregon Trial Lawyers Association in the room, but that's one of the advocacy groups that we've got to overcome in order to do this, to protect our local government, our local communities, so that we can actually have recreation in Oregon. One of the other ones that was just of interest, because it's one of the first in the nation, is Senate Bill 1596, which is the Right to Repair. And I don't know if any of you followed the Right to Repair. It was an interesting bill. Senator Solomon worked on this for a long time. It's been a long time coming. And this is one that I supported. The only opposition that we had in the building was Apple, and they worked the building hard to try to oppose it, because part of this bill has parts pairing. And what that means, there are certain, I think there are seven parts on a phone, that essentially, you have to use an Apple product, because it syncs into your phone. To me, they never made a valid argument. One of the, you know, I always try to learn and watch what some of the senior legislators do. And I'll tell you, Senator Golden, when, on the Senate side, when Apple was before him, there were three elements in this bill that Apple said, we would not oppose the bill, except for these three things. And Senator Golden said, are you doing this now? It was all related to parts pairing. Are you doing this now? No. Are you doing this now? No. Are you doing this now? No. Then why are you opposing the bill? So on the record, Apple said they're not doing any of those three things, but those were the reasons why. So I supported it. It went forward. It passed. It's the first in the nation. Some of the other states have watered-down versions of this bill. None of them have that parts pairing section. So my hope is that this is a way that we can encourage folks that want to be technicians, that want to open their own businesses, that now you can do those things. For those folks that are entrepreneurs, that know a lot more about technology, and want to try and create things, to help out with some of our cell phones, some of our technology, this is a way to entice that. And so I was very excited to support this, very excited to see it going forward. So, yeah, the Right to Repair, that was an intense conversation throughout the building, and went down to the last minute. One of the other bills that I'm very excited about, this is again Rep. Nathanson's bill. I always try to give credit where credit's due to the people that work hard and get some good legislation passed. Rep. Nathanson regarding the University District Hospital closing in Eugene, and the void that that left, for a number of different reasons. One of the key things that happened as a result is now Eugene-Springfield Fire has to drive a lot longer, about 20 minutes, to get to Riverbinder or to get to Mackenzie. They don't have that hospital they can drive to. So Rep. Nathanson brought together a bunch of us, she had a number of work groups, figured out what some things would be in there. A number of different elements in this bill. The two things I like, A, we funded for a year, $1 million for the city of Springfield to pay for an ambulance crew, because they have to staff another ambulance crew, just because of the amount of time it takes. So we get to keep an ambulance crew on the streets, which is key. They're using an older ambulance, so this is just funding for the crew for a year, till they can figure out what needs to happen. The other thing that I like about this is that there's an innovation fund, and what this innovation fund does, it is a way to look at, how can we deliver healthcare better and more efficiently? And some of what we've talked about in those workgroup meetings is, how can we use telehealth? How can we use nurses on a phone? How can we bring people, providers, out to people on the street or on the road that need assistance where they're at, instead of having an ambulance pick them up and then take them to an ER? Because not all of the things that people need medical care for are ER-level emergencies. Let's not back up our ERs. Let's be more efficient with our healthcare and healthcare system, given everything that we're having issues with, with workforce, with wait times, with all these kind of things. How do we do it better? And particularly, as we found out, as, you know, I talked to a lot of the communities after the ice storm, when our local clinics close because there's no power, when the folks that work at our local clinics can't get there for the same reasons of the ice, how do we do a better job getting healthcare to people that need it? Because one of the things that happened is, everybody that had slip-and-fall accidents, as soon as the ice cleared a few days later, they all went up to the ER, and the ER times were long, hours and hours, for, again, emergencies that really weren't emergency-room level injuries. They could be treated elsewhere. So if there's a way that we can do that better in times of emergency, then let's do that. So that's one of the reasons I'm excited about that bill, and appreciative of Rep. Nathanson and her work on that. A couple of other ones, House Bill 4156. This is Representative Mannix's bill, which modernizes our stocking laws. So, you know, Rep. Mannix, again, he was in the building in the mid-'90s, active in government, ran for governor in the early 2000s. His knowledge and experience is incredibly beneficial, and so the fact that he's part of my caucus, and I get to hear, you know, some of the background for these stories, and legislation that we have is enormous benefit to me. And so the original legislation that was passed in the mid-'90s, and he updated it this time around, and he had some strong advocates, victims of stalking. And what we did is, we brought in all the things that now modern technology brought to us that weren't in the '90s, air tags, you know, how to look at things through different counties, because people can travel and track people a number of different ways. You know, with all the different surveillance cameras and cameras that we have, so this bill brings in all that new technology and updates our stocking. So this is a way, again, that we can help protect the victims in our community and hold people accountable for some of their actions and behaviors. So excited about that one passing. The other one that I'll mention, House Bill 4024, Campaign Finance Reform. So first time in 49 years that the state of Oregon's going to have campaign contribution limits. This bill has a number of different things. It's got a number of different levels. It's implemented over time, doesn't become fully effective till '27, so it's not effective in this campaign cycle, and will be effective fully until three years from now. But that was a huge thing. That was unexpected. And again, some of the reason why that came about is because there's some initiative petitions out there that were going to do this, and what they had in those bills, most people didn't like. And so again, it forced a lot of legislators to come together and figure out, come up with a better way to go about doing the campaign finance reform, because it's something that we've talked about, something in the public sphere a lot, but the legislature just hasn't tackled it until this year. So one bill that I'll talk about real quick, that did not pass, because again, not everything passes, but this is a key, and it's a very important bill, because I personally support the concept. You know, it is a great concept. We absolutely have to do something. But again, it is complex, and we've got to get the words right on paper. And this is House Bill 4130, which is the Modernization of Healthcare Act, the Corporization Act. And Representative Bowman, who's now voted in as the majority leader, and I sit with on the healthcare committee, and his office was next to mine, I had a chance to talk to him about this bill quite a bit. He incorporated some of my feedback, but ultimately, I ended up not supporting it, because there's one key element that we haven't quite figured out. And so what this bill does is, because of all the mergers and acquisitions going on in the healthcare, and if you've read the paper, you might have heard about, you know, Optum taking over the Corvallis Clinic. Amazon now is getting into the pharmacy market. We have, throughout the state, a lot of local and independent pharmacies that have closed because of the mergers and acquisitions and corporatization, getting into the healthcare sector. And when you're beholden to shareholders, you're not, you know, it's tough for healthcare providers to really focus on the patient needs. It changes that focus, and that is my concern, is that we're not going to be delivering the healthcare to the people that we need, because some of the corporations and businesses are going to be more beholden to their shareholders. And we've seen this in a number of sectors with pharmacy benefit managers. The one part that we didn't get right, in my opinion, and why I opposed it, it ended up dying in the Senate. It passed the House, it died in the Senate, but what to do with existing organizations? And the question to me that I don't have an answer for, and the words on the paper didn't answer, is how do we tell existing corporation, existing organization, that now you have to reorganize? You have to do something different than what you've been doing for 20 years. We didn't get that right on the paper. The medical providers throughout the state, they're split. Some love it, say, yes, we need it. Some, particularly some in my district, some offices and organizations that I spoke to, say, no, we'll have to do something different. And because some of what it does, it makes it so that at least 51% of the organization has to be somebody that's a certified medical provider. So the questions are, what is going to happen with the private equity in our healthcare system? We need private equity in our healthcare system. We need people to invest. We need innovation. We need all of these things to happen, and private equity is a big part of that. So the question that people have is, private equity, if they can only own a maximum 49% of an organization, are they still going to be willing to invest in Oregon healthcare? Or are they going to leave and go elsewhere to other states that don't have that? And so part of that is, what do we do with our existing businesses? What is that going to look like economically? What is that going to look like, you know, in our entire healthcare ecosystem over time? So that's going to come back. Again, Representative Bowman, now, majority leader, so it's going to come back, but I know he's going to be working on it. I've been talking to him about it, and hopefully, we'll get it to the words on the paper, actually accomplish that goal, so that it actually protects people, and they get the healthcare that they need. And protect our healthcare business community. You know, we've got a lot of independent practitioners, a lot of doctors. I want them to own their businesses. I want them to run their businesses. How do we help, how do we balance all those needs into the right bill? So in looking forward to the '25 session, it's going to be the transportation section. I know that's a big concern here in Crestwell. We've talked about the jog and getting that taken care of. So that's on my list of projects, so I want to keep working with that. And then as we approach the '25 session, make sure that we're in a good position, that we can take advantage of any opportunities that come from funding, and that anything that comes out of that, Crestwell is included in that. The other projects that I've got in the district, I had a meeting last week about the Coburg-I5 interchange, because now they have that industrial property on the east side of I-5, and so it's some work that needs to happen there, and, you know, there might be some adjacent work that needs to happen in Coburg itself. So ensuring that we can do some bridge work, and that that project can advance as well, we take advantage of any opportunities. Oak Ridge, they want to do some things with Highway 58 as it goes through Oak Ridge. Specifically, they don't have AD-accessible sidewalks and curb cuts and those kind of things. There's some other things they want to do, so seeing how we can help improve Oak Ridge and Highway 58 going through there. And then the other project I've got on my list is, you know, pavement condition in just about every local community. Cottage Grove specifically, they've reached out, and they've got some concerns. So whatever we can do with some of those upgrades and getting money out there for pavement condition improvements is also on the list. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. Go in-depth with whatever, or go sit down and let you guys continue with your evening. Let me know what's your preferences.
Thank you very much. Wow, counting questions, comments?
Thank you for all of this. This is fascinating. I love particularly the, I'm really interested in tech stuff, so the Right to Repair and the horrible modern stocking thing. I'm glad you took a 21st century approach to that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And I do, we do appreciate all the work you've done to try to get us that million dollars, and we're still going to remain optimistic.
Always optimistic.
Always.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for your service to our district.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to the correspondence. So we had one item in our packet. Citizens reached out, and I was appreciative that Manager Amber and Chelsea responded with some information and allowed me to respond with an email to Evelyn Step about sidewalks and about the trees, so we did respond on that one. But, Council, any comments you have about correspondence? Council Clark?
Yes, so I think that this is probably answered in the correspondence, but I had the question about the large maple tree on North First Street, and if that was something that was city-owned, or if that was privately owned.
Manager Amber?
The city does maintain that tree, and they keep a pretty good eye on it. Yeah, we know it's out there, and yeah, they're assessing it on a regular basis.
Okay. Anything else? If not, then we will move on to the consent calendar. In the consent calendar, we are looking at the February 26 minutes. All items are considered routine and are enacted by a single motion. If a councilor wishes to pull something for correction purposes, please do so. Councilors, is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar for If not, then I'm entertaining motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Council Clark?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
You have a motion on the floor, they're second. Councilor Kent?
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Non-council will proceed to vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, consent calendar is approved as presented. All right. We move to the administrative report, Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the administrative reports are the bills. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have on the bills.
Council Clark?
Yes, I had a question on pages 14 and 15. I saw that there were bills on both pages for West Yost and Associates for about $5,000. And so I was just wondering if that was twice, or what that meant?
West Yost and Associates are currently doing work on our wastewater treatment plan update, and so those bills are for that update.
Any questions? Council Castilla?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just the biohabitats, I think it was a $6,000, just curious as to what service they provide for the city?
That is a consultant that has been doing some work to look at a natural treatment plan for the wastewater treatment. It would be something that would land apply or put treated effluent across a natural area to bring down the temperature and reduce ammonia, and so we're just looking at that as, to see if that's something that can save us some money.
And just one more is the, I think it's almost the last page, the company Staten?
State.
Dayton.
That's an airport, not, it's not Dayton, it's Oak Cliff. Sorry, my bad.
That's Stateon Construction, we hired them to haul off all the debris from the ice storm.
Okay, that was $56,780, wow.
That's quite a bit less than my cottage robe paid. They were in the millions.
So that was due to the emergency declaration. Thank you.
Any other questions about bills? All right, Manager Amber, first.
The next report is the Lane County Sheriff's Calls for Service, and we have Sergeant Speldridge here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. So if you take a look at our calls for service for this month, you'll see that we're on par as we are with the rest of the year as we're going forward. I mentioned at the last City Council meeting, we're starting to see that these are prepared by being for last year's reflection, so I've been here a little while and I'm starting to get a little better feel for the city. We did have two Measure 11 crimes, since I know the question's going to be about those. One of them is a sex abuse case where the victim does not want to pursue any type of prosecution, but we still are documenting it. And the other is a child pornography case that we are actively working and have a suspect will be arresting in the near future. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding any of the calls for service.
Council Smith?
I have quite a few.
Manager Wysson, thank you.
Does Crestwell have a flop house near the City Hall?
A flop house near the City Hall?
Could you define what you mean by a flop house?
Somebody coming in and out, transient, whether they're doing drugs or not, somewhere that they're coming in and out of regularly, some say, some might not.
So there are some residences in Crestwell where there's a lot of foot traffic. Some of those residences are on our radar already. I guess that's the best way I can answer that question. I'm not sure what activities go on at those residences in particular, but they are some residences that we are monitoring.
We got a few more. There's a fight between homeless man and a couple deputies not too long ago at TJ's. We know that homeless man was a citizen of Crestwell?
I don't believe he was. All of our contacts at the sheriff's office has had with him has been based out of the Junction City area. I had seen him walking around earlier that day, prior to that incident you're talking about, and I had never seen him until that day. I don't think that he's a Crestwell resident.
Did he happen to say why he was in Crestwell? And another one, have we, how many homeless people in our area have been arrested or cited in the last month?
I don't have a number for in the last month. We have issued, you know, a handful of citations, let's see, probably two or three in the last month or two to our homeless population, and we've made probably the same amount of arrests.
Does it seem to be escalating at all, or staying the same? In my opinion, from your reports, it seems like it's escalating slightly.
No, it's kind of, it's kind of staying the same with regards to our homeless population. It's not uncommon for us to have issues with somebody who is homeless that's coming through our area. Generally, the majority of issues that we have with our homeless population are the people who are not constantly staying in Crestwell. We do have a handful of, you know, people that we see frequently that are homeless within the city, and we do have some issues with them, but generally, the cases that you're probably seeing, like the fight behind TJ's, that's, they're not from our area, they're passing through because we're on the I-5 corridor.
I just, I saw, there's a public record, one of our homeless had issues at the B&B, which led to the roundup, and there was like disorderly conduct cited, something like that. That was a local homeless.
Well, she's actually not homeless. Are you talking about, so that was last night?
Yeah.
Where we did make an arrest, it was use of force. She's not homeless, she lives off outside of town, but she, I can see why somebody would think that she was.
I got one more. I've heard of reports of homeless staying under the bridge of I-5 off Mountain Road. Do you have, can you confirm that, or do you know of that?
I haven't, I haven't heard consistently that there's people underneath I-5.
Yeah, right kind of where Taco Bell, there's a little kind of slew that runs underneath there.
So I haven't heard anything consistent about that. I have heard that someone has seen somebody sleeping under there. When I've gone to look, it looks like somebody was there overnight, but was no longer there. I know that for a while, we had somebody that was sleeping under the bridge, kind of right next to the Comfort Inn, in Oregon Avenue, but I haven't seen them down there in a while.
That's all I have on my list.
Dave?
Thanks, sir.
Council Castilla?
Just one quick comment, Sergeant Speldridge, here last month, you had five speeding citations? That was last month? This month? I see one? You set that bar pretty high. Appreciate your, appreciate your work.
Thank you. So I noticed under property cases, 38 calls, 13 cases, that's higher than in most recent months. Any indication where, can you expand on that?
So, the property crimes, some of these are trespasses, like we had a couple weeks ago, we had a fellow from outside of town that wouldn't leave a business, and that drew a case number, he was arrested for that. Some of these property crimes were also, there was a case of criminal mischief, where a couple different cars had their tires slashed, and so each of those, each victim draws a separate case number. It all happened on one night, there was no, I guess, actionable suspect information, there was no video or surveillance or anything, and it hasn't happened since. So I don't know if we had somebody have an episode, or somebody, you know, what the case was there, why there were three different situations like that. There hasn't been, since, since the burglaries we had during the ice storm, there hasn't been like a consistent, this is a problem we're having with property crimes, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Sergeant Speldridge? Okay, thank you very much, thanks for your good work.
Thank you.
All right, Manager Amber?
Thank you. The next report is the City Attorney's Report. After that is the Code Enforcement Report. You have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
I had a couple of questions on, that on the first page, it refers to wagons. So on code enforcement, we did have one member of the public who turned in a request to speak, so I'll allow that individual to come speak first, then we'll, then we'll talk about code enforcement and answer my questions, how's that? So William Kent signed up to speak, under code enforcement, if you'll come forward, William?
It's kind of Wagon's West.
Come right up here to the podium.
Hi, my name is William Kent, and wagons, it's no surprise, Ed Gunderson and I have started trying to build some wagons, and having looked into the homeless in Crestwell, we basically have some Crestwellians that are homeless, and then we have the transient homeless that maybe come through Crestwell, but in our, in our own residents, they kind of break down into almost three categories, too. You've got the ones that have motorhomes, that's like the KOA of homelessness. You have some that sleep in their vehicle, and that's not real comfortable. You have some that are out in the bush, you know, in a tent or something outside the city. But we started running into some of them that tried to exist in a tent within the designated area in Crestwell. And so Ed and I got together and tried to revive the idea of building Conestoga wagons that were movable. And I know a lot of you have probably seen the ones downtown in Eugene, the really large ones. Well, we went back to bicycle towable wagons, and so we took the effort to meet with Chelsea, both Ed and I sat down and tried to hammer out what's a wagon, how often it has to move. She mapped out the core of the city, these streets are provided, so that we would have a surety that these things were trying to comply with Crestwell code. Thought we were doing fairly well, and then all of a sudden we come up and there's this green sticker on the wagon, and it says that you're going to be impounded for abandonment. Had nothing to do with Crestwell code, didn't cite Crestwell code, it cited county code of abandonment of a vehicle. And so at first I thought, man, someone's targeting us because they don't like the Conestoga. I then went down and I visited with everybody of our homeless in the core, they all had the same green sticker on their vehicle. And when I asked Chelsea, you know, what's changed, what's going on with the code, nothing's changed, you probably just have overstayed the 72 hours. Well, since I personally moved that wagon, I know we were well within, we were actually in two days of moving, not three, so we were well within the code on that. I then checked with everybody else, they were all well within code. Now, to me, it sounded like it had approached harassment, because one of the guys I met down there, he had a brand new rig, I mean, this is a brand new, really premium rig, and a car. He was a welder from out of state, come in and he was looking for work, high-paid welder. Tried to stay at the KOA, they said, ah, we're full. So he was the first night in Crestwell, comes and here's the sticker that he's going to get his vehicle impounded. He bought gas and left town. Sam was all upset, I got another day to move, he'd never seen one of these either, so all I've got to say is, we either, if Sergeant Speldridge, I think, tried to tell some of them that, well, this is just kind of a 24-hour notice, that you have to move within 24 hours, it didn't feel like that, didn't look like that. So if we want to have stickers that, hey, you got a day to move, that's fine. If we want to have the code enforcement officer, who should be out ticketing, do something, that's fine, but weaponizing the police to come around and ticket everybody on the street with the same notice, I have some objections to that, and that's why I sent the email. Thanks.
Thank you. So, Manager Amber, my question on the first page, it referred to wagons, so are there plural, are there multiple wagons right now in Crestwell?
As far as I know, there's only one.
Okay. Then I had a question about, this is opposite the page of creating a hazard, is the picture of basketball hoops and then refers to the Oregon wagon, and talks about bicycles in the right of way. And my question was, because then on the next page, it shows the Conestoga with, it looks like maybe two bicycles. Where, where are they to put their bicycles? That was my question, because they can't put them on sidewalks, and then property, or intruders, private property, they can't put it there. So do we have a spot where, and those are, look like they're tucked in about as neatly as they can right close to, to where they're staying, where, where can they put their bicycles overnight?
We've directed them to put them in a bicycle stand. We do have bicycle stands all around town.
Like over here, where you can put it?
Lock it.
Lock it up?
Right.
Those are my questions. Other councillors, questions about code enforcement?
More, just a comment on the very last pages, there is mention of the, two of the problematic homes that we were just kind of discussing with Sergeant Speldridge. I know for a fact that those, I know some friends that live right there, and yes, those are very problematic. I just appreciate that they are, the comments there is made that the deputy, they do deal with them frequently.
Any other questions about code enforcement? Oh, Council Clark?
Yeah, I also just had a question about the wagons, and it's honestly, it's the first time I've seen photos of them. And so it looks like they're, the wagons, and I'm referencing, for anyone who's interested, I'm referencing page 29, so 28, 29. And so it looks like the wagons themselves are on maybe levelers, are there, is there wheels underneath that, or is it movable?
Yes, it's movable.
Okay, great.
Okay. Oh, Council Castilla?
Yeah, on the, I know there was a, the email that Mr. Kent sent earlier in the week, it showed a green tag on the wagon, I see an orange tag, is that, is that something different?
Yes, that's a door hanger.
Okay, is that, is that the move notice or something?
Yeah, I'm guessing it is. It's something that we use typically to, it's a blank form, and we fill it out to let people know what code they violated, and then since there was no door handle, she taped it to the wagon.
Okay, I think that covers that, so we're on to building permit.
Okay, building permit recap. If you have any questions, it's pretty straightforward. After that is the Strategic Plan Quarterly Update. You have any questions on that?
Give us just a minute to put away the big stack and look at Strategic Plan Update, have that. Okay, Strategic Plan Update. Councillors, questions, comments? Well, I have just an observation or an encouragement, I see on page three that, do we still have some councillors who haven't yet completed their FEMA training? Now, Clark, you're brand new, did you know about the FEMA training?
I do know about the FEMA training.
I do know about the FEMA training. I am halfway through the first part.
Okay, very good. So I had down previously that Shelley, you needed to complete number 700.
Dumped on it.
Okay, all done. Check that out.
And 800.
And 800? Is there an 800, too?
There is.
Uh-oh, 800. I didn't have that down here. Is that an 800 for all of us to take, or is Shelley just being eager?
Yeah, she's an overachiever.
Okay, okay. And then, and then councillor Osborne, how are you doing with your FEMA?
I haven't done it. I, I did it and passed it and got no credit for it. I need to do it still.
Okay, and if you need any assistance with getting on there, is Jim the one she goes to?
All right, I'll help you, either one.
Okay. All right, that was just my one observation on that point. Councillor, comments about strategic plan? Okay. Oh, councillor Clark?
I just wanted to reflect as I look at the work that has already been completed on the strategic plan. That's incredible. I mean, you all and staff have been working your tail ends off on, on getting this done and moving, moving forward towards completion of the strategic plan. And I was really impressed as, as I read over everything that has already been accomplished. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Castillo.
Yes, I'll just reiterate that it's a great quarterly report and keep up the great work.
Thank you. And the last but not least, it's not on the agenda, but this, um, this last week, we were awarded a very nice little recognition from CIS. It's a beautiful block on a nice piece of wood for our 20 years of continuous membership. So we have had, we've been a member of the county insurance, or city-county insurance services for 40 years. That was nice.
Yes, thank you.
And that ends the administrative report.
Okay, so now we move to council action items. Item A. Is the resolution ending the temporary state of emergency within the boundaries of the city of Crestwell? Manager Amber?
That's correct. It's ending it, not extending it. Thank you. The, uh, the need for it is over. We have done all the work and we have tallied all the bills, and they are ready to be submitted. So we're ready to end the emergency.
Okay, so Resolution 2024-08. It may still say on top, yours, at the top, a resolution extending. So when we, um, is there, is there a suggested motion? Yes, it is right there. It does say ending. All right, great. And then on the, on the document here, I talked to Caitlin earlier on about the date at the very bottom. Did you print up a new one that I'll sign? If it's, if it's passed, okay, great. So the very bottom, it says adopt the eighth day of February, and that's incorrect as well. Okay, so council, questions you have from Andrew Amber? Discussion? Councillor Osborne?
Did we spend the money that was set aside for the emergency, or did we?
Let's make sure we get your microphone pointed right at you there. Thank you.
Did we end up spending the money to solve a problem that we expected to spend?
Our cost came in under the $150,000 mark. And that is due to the very hard work and diligence of our public works group.
Okay. Other questions, your comments? Councillor Castillo?
Do we know what that tally, that figure is?
I can work with Jim to get that to you tomorrow.
Sure, do that. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm entertaining a motion on Resolution 2024-08, a resolution ending the temporary state of emergency within the boundaries of the city of Crestwell. Councillor Clark?
I move that the city council adopt Resolution 2024-08, ending the temporary state of emergency within the boundaries of the city of Crestwell.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by, looks like councillor Smith's handling it first. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item 6B, this is a resolution 2024-09, a resolution appropriating expenditures within the Building Department Fund. Mr. Piper?
Thank you, Mayor. City councillors, item we have before you will amend the budget for the Building Department Fund. We had a developer in town who wanted some additional assistance from a third-party plans review and building inspections company called Claire Company. They agreed to pay those fees. And what we're asking is the council appropriate $6,000 more in building inspection services under materials and services. And there's no offset in contingency because they'll be paid back by the developer.
Any questions, councillor Smith?
So the way I read it, I'm slightly confused. We needed to reappropriate $6,000, but then it also says the developer agreed to pay the fees. So can you help me better understand why we need to reappropriate $6,000 if you don't want to pay the fees?
Yeah. Good question, councillor Smith. Governmental accounting, we have to account for every expenditure. I, I know in for-profit business, you might have a receivable, and then you would receive them, and a payable, and, and they would offset. But in, in governmental accounting, we have to count for everything that goes out the door.
So he'll still be, we'll end up billing him anyway for it?
Yeah, we'll have an AR and some bill.
I was reading that and like, what?
It is confusing compared to the for-profit accounting.
Thank you.
Councillor Clark?
I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on kind of the, it's a challenging property development. And so I was wondering if you could kind of expand on what that is and what that entails. Just because this is the first I've heard of, or I've read something like this, and so I wanted to know a little bit more about that.
The developer of Bald Knob property does not wish to work with the individuals employed by the city of Cottage Grove, and therefore requested a different inspector. In order to accommodate that request, we hired Claire. Well, actually Cottage Grove hired Claire, so the, all of the invoices go to Cottage Grove, and then they bill us. We pay back Cottage Grove, and we get the money from the developer. He, he agreed to that, so we are expecting that he will pay those fees.
So follow-up question to this. So, so it sounds like the money that actually goes to Cottage Grove, and so we have, as a city of Crestwell, we have assurances that that, that $6,000 is going to come, $6,000, $6,000 is going to be paid and, and will come back to us.
Cottage Grove has already shown us that they have paid the money, so they're asking for us to reimburse them.
Great, okay.
Well, and I felt like I heard you saying that we have assurances that the individual at Bald Knob will, in fact, pay the $6,000.
We have the ability to place a lien on anyone who doesn't pay their property fines and things to the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion on Resolution, Resolution 2024-09, a resolution appropriating expenditures within the Building Department Fund. Councillor Castillo?
I move that the city council approve Resolution 2024-09, a resolution appropriating expenditures within the Building Department Fund.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councillor Smith, second the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to item 6C, Resolution 2024-10, adopting the Lane County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, specifically adopting Volume 2, Section 2, City of Crestwell. Curtis Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. And so tonight, I'm talking about adopting the Crestwell Annex, or Chapter, of the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so if, council, if we choose to adopt this plan, that provides us access to FEMA funding sources for completing our action items. And so the NHMP, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, NHMP is short for. Came about from the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, so it's relatively new in, in the planning world. And so it's a five-year plan, and this is Crestwell's second time in it. And so this go-around, Lane County helped coordinate the efforts. And it was a multi-jurisdictional plan with Veneta, Coburg, Oak Ridge, Pacific Power, a couple other utilities, a couple other cities as well. And the plan looks at the natural hazards in the area, and it looks at our critical facilities in the area. And so it looks at wildfires, cascade earthquake, and it looks at where our schools, where our hospitals, and where do those things overlap? And where those things overlap, that's where we define our action items. And action items can be a couple different types, but they're all supposed to be around mitigation. And so that can be updating your building code to make sure that new houses are seismically resilient. They can be infrastructure builds. So for example, in Crestwell, we're anchoring our water tanks to the foundation. So that improves our resilience against a cascade earthquake. That helps us provide drinking water to our citizens. That helps us provide fire suppression to our citizens. And so that's kind of what the plan sets us up to do, sets us up to, to acquire funding from FEMA funding sources. So there's a few different types. Brick is the main one. Stands for something resilience infrastructure, something, sorry. Yeah, I, I recommend that, that, uh, the council adopt Resolution 2024-10.
Okay, council, questions for Curtis? Councillor Castillo?
Just one, kind of. If funding is secured, I see the, the South Lane Fire Crestwell Station is up there for seismic retrofitting the, uh, the building, I guess. But with the fire station perhaps going away, do we know when that may happen? I mean, I would hate to see secured funding go towards that and then it be torn down. I mean, isn't it, is it not supposed to be going away?
I don't believe that there is secured funding for that. Actually, I know they were looking at, they were eligible to do a seismic retrofit on the building that they have. They are eligible for that. They meet the criteria. The problem is, they can't get their current equipment all in the building that they need to be responding to Crestwell. So they will need a bigger fire station, and they're going to build one that's, um, so to handle all of the equipment and to also be seismically, uh, stable. And have a protected parking area.
And it is still in the works that they would be moving, right?
That is still the intent. However, I believe their intention is to fund it through a bond. So they need to, um, pass a bond measure before they can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councillor Smith?
In your experience, I'm behind this resolution, but I have a question. Is, are we opening ourselves to any scrutiny by asking to be a part of this grant and asking for money? Is there a backdoor for federal government to come in and start poking the nose around things and potentially incurring more costs? Any chance?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Yeah, they very much encourage citizen, or cities to, to be a part of this plan. They, they want to help.
I just have a hard time trusting a lot of the federal government and open a door for them to come to the back. So I appreciate that trust or experience. I just want to make sure we weren't opening ourselves up to, you know, with the carrot in front of us of, hey, you need to do this, then they can come in and ask for more.
Manager Amber?
I don't think this is a grant. This is a plan that talks about what we would like to do to, well, we might apply for grants for some of it, but we might not. It just, it identifies what we have seen as a hazard and how we would fix it. It just talks about that. So it doesn't, doesn't compel us to apply for any grant or anything like that.
I don't know if I'll apply for a grant right now.
Not for, well, we do have a grant to anchor the reservoirs, yes. And we have, and that's the brick grant. And also to stabilize the connection. And then we're expecting a third grant to help us stabilize the underground infrastructure. And those are all federal grants.
Perfect, thank you.
So Curtis, my understanding was that this is a part of the Lane County plan, and that by being a part of that plan and having the council approve it, which is what we have to do, it then allows us to apply for grants for these projects if we so choose, but we are not obligated to do so. No?
Correct, yeah, correct.
Well, so there's no obligation that we have to apply for grants to do any of these?
This is, this is a plan, and there's no obligation for us to actually, I mean, there's, there's no penalty if we don't achieve what's in the plan. It's just showing how we will, how we intend to be more resilient. And one of the things that we're looking at, and we're hoping to be successful at, is establishing a resiliency hub here in Crestwell for our citizens in, so that in an emergency, there will be resources here for them. So we need to participate in resiliency projects, or at least have our finger on what we think needs to be done. And so this identifies those things. But again, the resiliency hub will go much further than this, and we're hoping to get, I think there's, I, I don't remember exactly, but there's like 13 resiliency hubs or something like that that are going to be established in the state, and we're hoping to be one of them.
Okay, councillor Castillo?
The way I understood this, and yeah, just out of the, I think it's the first memo, this plan is important to FEMA and must be adopted before a local government may apply for FEMA assistance in an emergency. So we have to have this in order to apply in, in an emergency.
There are a series of things that we have to do in order to apply for FEMA money. This is one of them. Another one is to have an emergency operations plan. Another one is to have city council trained in the emergency management system, the incidents, incident command system, ICS, and also NIMS, right? So those things are all part of the puzzle. This is, this is just a piece. It's not a standalone activity.
Just a quick, just a quick one on the hubs. Is that separate from the school district? I know they were working on some, something similar. I don't know if it's identical, but I know something similar. Is that separate than the city?
We want to connect it.
Okay, that's what.
So, yeah, we, we need to get together with Joel. And the airport is also working, has also had people working on some, some aspects of the hub. And of course, the school district is an important partner because I believe they're going to have the shelter in the gym. So we want them to be as part of the hub. And the hub will have resources for people at the school. They'll have resources at the airport. And if we have a third place, we'll have resources there, maybe at Public Works and things like that. We still have to work that out. But it is due by the end of the month.
Thanks.
Any additional questions? All right, then I'm entertaining a motion on Resolution 2024, adopting the Lane County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, specifically adopting Volume 2, Section 2, City of Crestwell. Thank you, Curtis. I'm entertaining a motion. Councillor Smith?
I move that the city council adopt Resolution 2024-10, a resolution adopting Volume 2, Section 2, City of Crestwell, of the Lane County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councillor Osborne, second the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to the backside of our agenda. Number D. This is a motion to name the city park located on South Second Street. Manager Amber, go ahead and give the report first, then we'll have the public hearing.
Okay. I have to apologize. For some reason, I decided it was going to be Robinette Hugs Park. But it's not. The proposed name is Robinette Hughes. And as you know, you met, the Parks and Tree Board met. They accepted nominations. They reviewed them. They brought them to you at a work session, and you were allowed to review them. And they made certain recommendations. However, city council wanted to do more. However, city council wanted to do more research. And so they asked for a historic document that was provided by the Crestwell Historical Society. And it was very interesting. And it kind of floated the name, the name Robinette Hughes to the top of the list. And that was a name that was recommended by members of the historical society. I was able to get in touch with Rob Robinette, who is a descendant of James Robinette. And I know for certain we've got his name right. And I believe he's here tonight. Thank you for coming. And so with that, we recommend, the recommendation is to move forward with naming Second Street Park to Robinette Hughes Park.
Okay, so we're going to have a public hearing. The city council will conduct a public hearing on the naming of the South Second Street Park. The council wishes to hear from anyone who is interested in commenting on this decision. If you would like to comment to the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name, share your thoughts with us, and we'll enjoy hearing from you. So at this time, the public hearing is open. If you'd like to speak, come become on the podium. All right, the public hearing is closed. So before we proceed, Mr. Robinette, thank you for coming tonight. Who do you have with you?
My wife.
And here you is?
Linda.
Linda, Linda, did I know you years ago?
Yes.
When you were at the church? I thought so. And when you considered this, I thought, well, I knew Linda Robinette many, many years ago. So thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Manager Amber.
I also see in the gallery Suzanne Peterson. And she's the one who made the nomination for this name, for the park.
I think several of us in the historical society did that. But it's, I'm glad that we could help out. So the Robinettes and the Hughes gave part of the first part of Crestwell, gave land to that.
So just so the people at home can hear, Suzanne was saying that this is important because the Robinette and Hughes families donated the land that eventually became the city of Crestwell. So we wouldn't have the land without this, these fine folks, and it's appropriate to recognize them.
So Suzanne, thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for working with the historical site in Crestwell. And we received several applications that all affirmed the value of naming the park after Robinette and Hughes for their, each one gave five acres of land, and it's well accounted for in the book that we read about the Blue Valley, the history of Crestwell. And they decided that right down the middle of that land would be Oregon Avenue. So five acres on one side, five acres on the other side. And that became City of Crestwell. So thank you all. All right, the floor is open for discussion, councilors. No discussion. All right, then I'm entertaining a motion on naming of the city park located on South Second Street. Councilor Osborne.
I move that the city council rename Second Street Park to Robinette Hughes Park.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Councilor Clark, second the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although as opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And a thank you to the Robinette family, the Hughes family. This is the first park we've added to the city of Crestwell for a while. And it's got a beautiful playground for children. It's going to have a water feature that will be open this summer. So if you've got grandchildren or great-grandchildren, bring them down, and they can splash in the splash pad, play in the playground. And you can say, this is named after great-great-grandfather? Or how many greats back is it?
I don't even know.
Okay. Well, we will be very excited as a city to put up a sign that said, Robinette Hughes Park.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we move on to item E, adopting goals for city manager. Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mary. You have the list of goals that we reviewed at the work session. I did add grants to the list. And it's before you now for either comment, correction, or adoption.
Council members, discussion. We looked this over at our work session. Councilor Castillo.
I would say it looks great.
Thank you.
I would, if I could put explore funding for infrastructure in bold, I would do it. It looks great, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further hands up, then I'm entertaining motion on item Six F, Six E, adopting goals for 2024 city manager goals. Councilor Castillo.
I move that the city council adopt the city manager goals for 2024 as presented.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Councilor Kent, second the motion.
Yes, I second the motion.
All right. Council, any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although as opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to item Six F, which is, let me pull that out here. Six F, a motion approving a quick claim deed for the Crestwell School House. Manager Amber, if you'll give us a report first, and then we have one member of the public here who has signed his petition request form.
Okay, this was brought, this was a request that was made to me, and I brought it to the city council at your work session. A little bit of history is that the old schoolhouse was bought by the city for a dollar way back when. And it sat for a very long time with the city not doing anything with it. And I think it became a concern to some of the citizens who had history with the old schoolhouse. And they would like to see it, they said that they would like to see it fixed up and used. And that it had significance to the city as a, you know, as a general, as a general sort of thing. And we looked at it, and we decided we did not want to fix it up. And so the city council at the time decided to declare a surplus. And then this group got together and created a nonprofit to come to the city council and request that they be given the building, which the city council at that time agreed to. And at that time, there was some uncertainty as to whether or not the Crestwood, the Crestwell, oh, I'm sorry, Crestwell Heritage Foundation would actually be able to accomplish this seemingly huge project. So the city had in the sale deed a statement that if the Crestwell Heritage Foundation was dissolved, the ownership of the building would revert back to the city. Well, they've done a great job. I mean, it's a beautiful building. They've maintained its historical integrity. They've just done an amazing job. And, you know, deserve a lot of credit for what they did. And they've taken something that was a liability to the city and didn't make it an asset for the rest of, for the citizens. So, you know, I do commend them for that. So now they're ready to pass it along to someone else to actually manage the building and manage the programs that will come in and out of the building. And this one little bit of language causes a little bit of a hiccup because they would like to pass it on to the Crestwell First Community Foundation. But the community foundation is concerned that should the Crestwell Heritage Foundation go away, the city, under this agreement, could take back the schoolhouse. And that just wouldn't be fair. So they've asked for a quick claim on the, on the building. And that's before you tonight for your consideration.
Okay, so we have one speaker who signed up, and that is Su Ludo. So if you'd come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Su Ludo. Michelle pretty much said everything I was planning to say, and said it very well. Let me see if I just need to touch on anything else. I am the treasurer of Crestwell First, of the board. Some of you might know me as the former library director. And I had kind of a recap, too, that in 20, I think it was 2017, that the old schoolhouse, which served many years as the volunteer library for Crestwell, and people have fond memories of that, it was declared surplus. And the council was charged with deciding what to do with an old, decaying building. And the schoolhouse had been standing empty since 2006, when the library moved to Oregon Avenue. And it was really becoming dangerously unstable. So at that time, the foundation did, the Crestwell Heritage Foundation did ask for it to be, to get a chance to restore that building. And as you said, they did a fantastic job. So I was going to mention that the city was very generous in giving some seed money to the Heritage Foundation to help them get started because you knew it was a big task. And that seed money was used to hire an architect, to develop plans, and begin stabilizing the building. And those city funds also demonstrated local support for the project, helping the Heritage Foundation secure over $300,000 in additional donations and grants to complete the project of restoring the schoolhouse to a safe, stable, and beautiful building that Crestwell can be proud of now. And so Crestwell First is willing to accept ownership of the schoolhouse so that this gem can stay in public use because Crestwell needs places for meetings and gatherings. Our plan is to make the space available to Crestwell nonprofits at low or no cost. The space will also be available for the public to rent and can handle groups of about 50 people. We have lots of ideas for how the facility can be used for community programs and events. And the library also has program ideas for the space. Because we care about the future of this community asset and because of the respect we have for the work Crestwell Heritage Foundation put into the restoration, we want to do all we can to secure it for the future. Since we all have the same overall objective for the schoolhouse, to maintain it historically and to facilitate its use by the citizens of Crestwell, we humbly ask you, councilors, that you remove any encumbrances from the property that could hinder our success as stewards of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, council, first of all, any questions that you have of Manager Amber about this? We have before us the statutory quick claim. Question you have for Manager Amber? Okay, so, Councilor Clark?
Yeah, so, so there's that $50,000 grant that I think was coming up as a question over the course of the last couple of work sessions. And so I guess I'm wondering, would you have a ballpark cost of what it would cost the city to have kept that building open even in its current state for the last seven years?
Goodness gracious, no. That building truly, from the city's point of view, we had an inspector come in and look at it. And they gave us a ballpark figure for improving the building that was way beyond what the city wanted to fund. You know, there was, there was some hope that the city would, you know, put a staff member on it and fix it up and, you know, have it as a, as a resource. But we didn't have the staff to do that. So it really is a blessing that the heritage group came forward and fixed it up. You know, we do manage a building. It's our community center over here. And we don't make a lot of money off of it because we do make it available to nonprofits within the city and to citizens at a greatly reduced rate. Some of them are even free. So I can't see that seven years of ownership would have happened. I think we would have demolished it. It didn't even have a foundation. It was sitting on boulders, and it was falling apart. I mean, it is amazing what they did to save that building. And it's a labor of love. And I think they deserve some credit for that.
Just to follow, would it be fair to categorize that $50,000 has been invested back into the city of Crestwell through renovation of this building and to provide ongoing services to the city of Crestwell?
I think $50,000 was a deal to have a $300,000 renovation. That $50,000 was for some of the contract things that Miss Ludo suggested. But also, we intended for it because at the beginning, there was no, there was no money in the purse. They couldn't pay their electricity, they couldn't pay their water, they couldn't pay, you know, anything. So it was important for us to be able to get money for water. And so some of that money has come back to the city directly, but most of it's indirect.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, discussion. Councilor Castillo.
I've been thinking about this quite a bit since we last met in our work session. And I, it appears to me that in 2017, I think that's when these $50,000 was granted from the council, whoever they were at that time. And I think that the, that council put a lot of trust and took a leap of faith into the Heritage Foundation that they would do the right thing for the city of Crestwell. And however, you know, it is, it is $50,000 of the citizens of Crestwell's money. And I think it has been spent wisely, it has been invested wisely. And I would like to, I think I would like to continue that trust with Crestwell First taking over and that they would continue to, to make sure that that building is put to use for the interest of Crestwell.
Thank you. Other councilors, will it weigh in? Councilor Smith.
I'd just like to comment. I can't say enough about Crestwell First and Crestwell Heritage and what you guys are trying to do, what you have done. Everything that you've said, that Manager Amber has said, I can't agree enough. It's amazing to invest that kind of money and keep a building like that that does have so much history for Crestwell. And my only concern with this motion, it's legal language and the concern of what if Crestwell Heritage does dissolve? And where that goes. And because the citizens of Crestwell did donate $50,000 to that, that is literally my only issue of where does it go? I believe that we all want the same thing, and we're in the, trying to go to the same spot. I think I'm navigating a different way. But I wanted to be on record with that. But I also want to be on record with, I wanted to stay here. I think you guys have done an amazing job. I think the foundations, both of you guys will do exactly what, you know, the intent is. I just think the legal language in it, if the Crestwell Heritage was to dissolve, where does the building go from there? And my only concern was trying to keep it, to go back to the city so that we can try and upkeep it or that it's a city asset. But as I understand it, Manager Amber might be able to confer here, is that the quick claim deed paperwork will not allow that, correct?
That's correct. It will remove the city from the equation.
So that is my only minor concern. So whether my vote goes aye or nay, I'm still rooting for you. And I hope for the best, and I, I can't be more honest than that, though. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor, so, yes, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, I just did, again, I just did quick calculator math, right? So nothing, nothing too specific, but I looked over the course of the last seven years that the Crestwell Heritage Foundation has had, again, basic math, it runs, it runs out to be about $7,000 a year that we were, that was granted. And I think about the cost of insuring a building, insuring a building that is not in good condition. I think about the, the cost of renovating a building, the additional insurance that comes with when you have a building that is in better condition and wanting to use it for, for public events. I think about the cost of running water and electricity, and I think about all of those costs, and I feel confident, again, I haven't done all of the math, but I feel confident that we have gotten a really good value of that $50,000, and that has been reinvested back into the city of Crestwell. I also want to echo, the work that the Crestwell Heritage Foundation has done has been Herculean in terms of just obtaining an additional $300,000. Again, that's going to be invested back into the city of Crestwell for events, that's for history. And so I think in 2017, our city council took a leap of faith, and I would also like to continue to take that leap of faith.
All right. I want to make sure every counselor has an opportunity to speak if they would like to do this. So Counselor Auburn and Counselor Kent, I don't believe you have spoken to this, if you would like to speak to it. Counselor Auburn?
I wonder, something that hasn't been brought up, should they have to tear down the building, that would have cost the city a lot of money to tear it down, probably a lot, at least $50,000 just to tear it down, and then we wouldn't have this resource to be used in the future for our city.
All right. Counselor Kent?
I don't really have anything specific to add other than great work to the Crestwell Heritage Foundation and Crestwell First, a big fan, that's all.
So when I was here in 2017, I was the mayor who pushed the envelope, because the building had been sitting, and I had fond memories going back to the 1980s and 90s of going there and taking my children to check out books, and knew that it wasn't going to last for much longer. So I pushed the envelope, and, you know, last year we had some meetings here that were very well attended with a lot of passion. Remember those meetings? In 2017, when we had the meetings about this, the council chambers were pretty full, and there was a lot of passion. And the passion was people saying, "Save our building, city council. Don't you dare tear it down. Don't you sell it. Save it." But the passion had to meet up with someone who was willing to do something about it, and that really was Berlin. So Berlin, I just give you a ton of credit, and you look younger now than you did seven years ago. Berlin stepped forward, and a loyal band of people who just wouldn't give up, and came forward with a plan. And the plan was, if you give it to us, we'll do everything we can to make it go. But you were pretty honest, we don't even have money to insure the building. Because I do remember that was one of the costs we talked about, was we were insuring every year, and that was costing us some money, and I think we had some basic charge for electricity and things like that. So there was pretty minimal, but there was a cost, and you were, you were a startup organization, you didn't have funds. So the city provided those funds. And Counselor Smith, I, I understand that we made a public investment, public funds, $50,000. And the discussion we had a couple weeks ago was good, because I went away thinking, okay, in my mind, how do I account for $50,000 of public funds expended into a building? And what we, and what the public gets out of it? And I had a strange thought. When the day comes, that the building is, the building has been opened already several times, because you've had open houses and different things kind of show and tell, but at some point, I'm optimistic the building's going to be open to a family group. My wife has said, because one of the pictures you have of the old schoolhouse is down there, featured my wife's grandmother standing in front of the building with a group of ladies when the ladies group in town owned it, and my great, my wife's great-great-grandmother was the president of that. So we donated that photo. My, my wife said, "Wouldn't it be cool for us to have a big family Thanksgiving thing here this year?" That probably won't be the first time the doors are open to the public. But I thought to myself, on the day the doors are open to the public for a family group or a nonprofit group to go down and have a meeting there, on that day, we will have gained our $50,000 investment. Because if it hadn't been for that 50K public money and the work that you did, that building would not be there today. I think it would have been torn down. I think the city would have said, "It's got to go away, it's not safe." On the day the doors open for the first time and the public walks in and says, "Wow, isn't this amazing?" I think we will have earned our $50,000 back of public funds, because we'll have a building. And we also look at who represents the people taking the building over, and Sue, you, you used the word seed money. I like that idea. You know, you put a seed in the, in the ground, and that seed may be ugly and dried up, but you have this optimistic viewpoint that what comes up is going to be beautiful, and I know you're a gardener, Sue. And I like to think that we invested, we put a $50,000 seed into the ground in this ugly, decaying, falling-down building, and what came up out of the ground? In this beautiful, historical building that you can walk into and feel confident and go flush your toilet, use the sink, and stay warm. And we put, we put seed in the ground, and what's come up is something pretty amazing, and I just have a lot of confidence. Sue, you came here as our librarian years ago, and we were kind of a fledgling library, and we now have a, have a library district, a beautiful facility, a staff, and an awful lot of that was because, Sue, of your passion and because of your skill set. And you're surrounded by a group of others here, Denise Dean's here, Jenny's here, and Don's here. You're surrounded by a group of people, a board, that are so passionate about Crestwell that you serve on as a nonprofit board every year to funnel money into organizations in Crestwell. So I have a lot of confidence that way as well, too. But I just want to say, you know, thank you, Michelle. It was, it was your idea to put that seed in the ground. Thank you for relining, for watering, and tending it, and thank you for those who are ready now to harvest.
So counsel, any further comments? Be happy before we take a vote. Counselor Smith?
So again, I can't argue with anything that any of the councilors, the mayor, City Manager Amber has said, and you at the work sessions. I cannot disagree with anything you said, and I'm not against this, but I have to vote with my conviction, and my concern is things do change, and if Crestwell Heritage Foundation dissolves, where does that go? And that, in the legal language, is my only issue. Other than that, I agree with everyone, that everything that everyone here has said, but I'm, I'm going to vote with my conviction. However, I think the tide will turn in the right direction, so that ultimately is right, but I just want to stand convicted in my thoughts, and it's literally just legal language, and ultimately, I think what's supposed to happen is going to happen.
Additional comments? All right. All right, now we entertain the motion on item 6F, a motion approving a quick claim deed for the Crestwell Schoolhouse. Counselor Clint? Counselor Clark?
We have two very similar--
Clark and Clark can't mix each other.
I move that the city council approve the statutory quit, quitclaim deed granting all rights, title, and interest to the Crestwell Heritage Foundation.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Counselor Castillo seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Counsel will proceed to vote. All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Vote as opposed, same sign. Motion passes with Counselor Smith voting in opposition. We move to item 6G, and we understand that this has been pulled from the agenda tonight. Okay, item 6G has been pulled from the agenda because the application is for a location outside of the city limits. Is that correct? All right. So upcoming meetings and boards, meeting events, you've got all those there, and now we are set to adjourn. Thank you for coming tonight. So Castillo. You're a supporter.
You're the one that--
See the kids down there?
And the resolution.
And the resolution.
Thank you so much.
It's going to be rough here.
I've been telling all my right-wing friends, it's like, you know what? Okay, she's actually been doing all kinds of good stuff for all of us, it's just like, it's okay, it's okay.
Thank you so much.
It's polarizing, so it's not even that hard to find somebody who's in the middle of the road and is actually willing to work for you.
Thank you.
Yes, that makes sense.
You know, I was kind of curious.
Sorry, I didn't get to meet you before.
Yeah, well, you have a lot of board experience, so that's why I pointed you to the seat.
I appreciate it. I was saying this was an inspiring city council. There was a lot of city council meetings, and it was inspiring. I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, good. Yeah, well, sometimes that happens, all right.
That was great.
And Steve Carmichael was here tonight.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. I look forward to getting acquainted with you.
Okay, sure.
Well, second and D Street. Yeah, we're just doing the first block.
Derek Isaacson?
Is that show?
We're doing from the back of your property.
Do you like court shoes?
I'm trying.
Yeah, it's everything good.
Is your purse safe with me?
Those still are the right things.
Because this one's 630, which I thought was interesting. It should be 610. Were you also 630 on that one?
No, it's fine. It's just I don't have a quick key card to get in.
Otherwise, we would have lost our money.
I wanted to make sure it was authorized.
We might be able to campaign for that.
We have a pile of bricks.
It's just like trying to stop us from having--
It's not illegal.
Oh, those boulders.
Yeah, I want to fly a boulder.
I'm used to being--
Oh, fantastic. Nice. So I just, I'm going through the constant audits, cybersecurity, Sentinel One, security company.
I do that as my day job, and we've achieved a better high ATF.
Have to be exactly right on everything all the time, so then you can't--
Once it's cement, it's really hard to change.
Thanks for everything that you said, Michelle.
I just watched.
The general significance of the building is that it's--
Hi, Steve.
Steve's got to get to bed.
Well, and it was built by the community.
Mostly really interested on how--
How many of those buildings are still around in the United States?
To make sure that they actually are real.
That's outside of home country.
I think it'd be a neat place to have a 50-year wedding anniversary or 25-year--
I'm really curious about how we're just going to one person. That's the kind of stuff that I'm going to bust with the looking here. We're actually getting--
Wow, exciting. Well, you would have to charge like 100 bucks a hit.
I figured it was, and I want to make sure that we're personally adopted. I don't like it when we don't do things that are adopted, being an auditor, totally getting ahead. There's so many things where I'm seeing like local, we're telling, we're going to figure this out, we've got to come up with something, you know, we adopt some things. Everything needs to be adopted. Like, why are you reinventing the--
You have a party ever.
So those are the things I'm--
Sounds like you have done all that to yourself.
So what is the Heritage Foundation going to do now?
But OTC does not, we don't fall into that.
New board members, new ideas, and new leadership. You guys have so much. Have so much experience now.
Everybody comes from a different, a different community, a different--
Yeah, I'm also really interested in likelihood of scenarios.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Michelle. So I'll touch base with you, Michelle.
Quick claim? What we have to do is we have to get the mayor to sign it, and then we'll have to--
Yeah, I don't want to give my title--
Where it's really obvious that the mayor wants to get more houses built. Automatically.
I have an exam on--
So I'm curious what the percentage is based on the different communities, what you're actually funding for certain. But I think that's more on the planning side of things than the actual planning committee. Yeah, I'm curious. Still curious. Yeah, well, yeah, and the other thing, to the state of emergency, what the implications are for that, what happens with those funds, things like that, very curious.
And I'm fine with that.
We're still-- We're sure.